Yeah.
I could never figure that one out.
Looks like it's in forty or fifty.
Right, and the red light is on folks, so that means we're on air. And I want to welcome everyone to our Albany City Council meeting this evening. So we have a lot of Bulldogs, I see here this evening. So Bulldogs, would you like to lead us in the flag salute? How about if you want to stand? And we will stand with you. And would you like to lead us? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. Great job. So, sorry, I kind of snuck that one up on you, but you did wonderful. Thank you. So, Mary, could we have a roll call?
Wilson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Upinski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay. And we have a special presentation this evening, and that's where we have quite a lot of folks here. And we've got a lot of red and black jackets here, too, and a lot of coats in blue. So Chief Bradner, would you like to lead the presentation this evening?
You bet. Thank you, Americanopa. Appreciate the opportunity to get in front of the council and the mayor tonight and all of the members of the public that are here and spend just a few minutes recognizing some outstanding individuals for going above and beyond and risking at times their life to save the life of another individual. These types of acts are heroic in their nature, and we want to make sure and point out to everyone out there how much we, as a department and as a city, appreciate them. So the first individuals I'd like to call forward are Robert Smith and David Wright, if David Wright is here. Okay, David wasn't able to make it tonight. So Robert, if you'd join me right up here. So Robert and David are receiving a civilian certificate of appreciation for their actions of pulling an individual out of the Lamont River. On August 29th, 2014, David Wright witnessed an individual jump off one of our bridges here in town, and he drove down to Tekeena Boat Landing where he got Robert's attention. And Robert had a boat there, and the two of them hopped in his boat, and they proceeded downstream before the firefighters could get there. And they located the individual about 200, as I understand, about 200 yards downstream. They rescued her from the water and started performing CPR, and then drove her back to Tekeena Boat Landing where they turned the care of that patient over to the Albany firefighters that were there. Unfortunately, the individual did not survive the fall from the bridge, but it wasn't due to the lack of effort from Mr. Smith and Mr. Wright that night. And so because of that, we want to award them with the civilian certificate of appreciation. And thank you for all that you did to try and help save the life of another individual in our community.
That's wonderful.
Okay, if William and Lilia Plata and Luke Barr would come forward, I'd appreciate it. So on the evening of May 1st of 2014, the Platas were driving down Gary Street when they noticed smoke and fire coming out of a house. And they stopped immediately. Mrs. Plata then called 911 to get our crews to respond to the fire. And then William went to the door and identified that there could be somebody at home. The door was locked, and he began banging on the door and ringing the doorbell and doing everything that he could to try and get their attention. About that time, off-duty Salem firefighter Luke Barr was driving by and noticed a commotion in the street. And so Luke then got out, put his years of training into action, ended up going up, forcing entry onto the door, got the door open, and then proceeded inside. With the help of Mr. Plata, they informed one occupant what was going on. It was a smoky and hot and dangerous environment for them to be in. Obviously, Luke wasn't in his normal firefighting gear, he was just in his civilian street clothes. But they rescued one individual out of the structure, and then they identified another individual that they began dragging to the front door to try and rescue her as well. Unfortunately, they weren't able to get that one victim out. Our crews showed up, and they were able to go inside with all of our gear on and work on rescuing that individual and then suppressing the fire. She didn't make it that night, but again, it wasn't due to any lack of effort on their part. So tonight, we're awarding William Plata with the civilian award of bravery. This award is presented to an individual whose act of courage saved or protected a human life, and I'm honored tonight to award Mr. Plata with our civilian award of bravery. We're also awarding Lilia Plata with a civilian certificate of appreciation. This award is presented to a deserving individual, group, or business for a deed or support that is worthy of recognition. So I'm honored tonight to present Mrs. Plata with a certificate of appreciation. And as I mentioned, firefighter Barr did not have his turnout gear with him, but he did sustain some first and second degree burns to his arm and his head and his back during the efforts, and actually, he had to end up going and being treated at the hospital. His efforts to try and save that individual and to save the one individual were nothing less than heroic that night, and we're honored that Luke Barr is a member of our community and then also a valuable member of the Oregon Fire Service. Tonight, we're going to award him with the Medal of Honor to firefighter Barr. The Medal of Honor is awarded to a fire service member who distinguishes him or herself by an act of extreme courage involving the risk of imminent danger to life with knowledge of such risk above and beyond the call of duty for the purpose of saving or protecting a human life. So I am pleased to award the Medal of Honor to Luke Barr. And if I could have the following members of the Albany Fire Department please come forward, and there's going to be about 12 of them or so, but if you could just kind of form a half circle here, I'd appreciate it. Battalion Chief Kevin Anderson, lieutenants Ron Lake, Pat Traeger, Chris LaBelle, and Steve Lehman, apparatus operators Doug Kettleson, Levi Lindsey, and Pat Weatherford, and firefighter paramedics Brady Halleck, Adam Byrd, Josh Bottommiller, Dylan Keiger, and Ray Woolridge. So these are the members of Albany Fire Department B Shift. And on the evening of September 5th, 2014, the Timber Hill neighborhood in North Corvallis was experiencing an extremely unusual wildland fire. It was a hot, wind-driven, east wind event that quickly exceeded the capabilities of the Corvallis Fire Department, and they started what our normal procedures would be of calling mutual aid in. They called some of their closer departments over there in Benton County, and then they called our resources in. And our crews worked tirelessly in order to save many lives and many homes that night. And so tonight, they're going to be awarded with the unit citation. When they got over there, they all got over there as a unit, and they were put to work almost immediately protecting a large apartment complex that the fire was barreling down on. And I could sit here and tell you the story about it, and it wouldn't be half as impressive as I'm sure it was for these guys to be there that night. It was a large apartment complex, and from what I understand, every smoke detector in every apartment in that complex was going off because the conditions were so smoky. They had fire barreling down, and it was just about ready to take over the apartment complex that night, and they were able to deploy their resources, their hose lines, their engines, in such a manner that they were able to protect every single one of those structures, and nobody lost their homes in the division that we were protecting that night. So it was just an outstanding effort on the part of the Albany Fire Department and the other firefighters that were there that night. So a unit citation is awarded in recognition of a company team or division that overcomes adverse conditions to uphold the mission of the Albany Fire Department to protect, prevent, and protect from harm. This award is represented by a blue and red commendation bar that's worn on the individual's Class A uniform. None of them have Class A uniforms on tonight because they're all on duty, and so we don't normally wear this when we're responding on calls. But they do have Class A uniforms, so they would wear this on that uniform. So we've got, as I said, quite a few to do. We're going to go around, and Shane's going to help me. And we'll start with Ray Woolridge. Congratulations. Congratulations. And Adam Byrd? Adam Byrd. And Brady Halleck. Congratulations. And we have two individuals, Josh Bottommiller and Pat Traeger, that were unable to make it. And before I do the last award, it's for battalion chief Kevin Anderson. He was the battalion chief on duty that night. He led our crews over there, and he made some split-second decisions that ultimately resulted in saving the homes and potentially the lives of hundreds of people over there. When he was initially called and requested to have crews sent over there, he made a decision to send our entire suppression forces from Albany over to Corvallis. They called and requested anything that we could send them. Obviously, they were in a world of hurt, and Kevin made the decision that he was going to dump all four of our stations and send all of our suppression crews over there. And that decision in and of itself led to saving a significant number of homes and potentially lives that night. So with that, in addition to battalion chief Anderson receiving the unit citation, battalion chief Anderson is going to receive our department's very first challenge coin. It's a new tradition that we're starting of providing challenge coins for individuals that go above and beyond and actually do things that are even more significant than just awarding of a unit citation. A little history behind a challenge coin, I did a little research on it. Challenge coins go way back to Roman times, when Roman soldiers would do above and beyond, and they would do more than just get a day's pay. Their commanding officer would give them a challenge coin and thank them. And so with that, I would like to thank battalion chief Kevin Anderson for his hard work and everything that he did that night that helped save the lives and homes of numerous people. Congratulations. All right, you guys can sit down. Okay, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize these individuals from our community and our department for the selfless and heroic acts that they did. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, the, and the thanks goes to all of you. And on behalf of the Albany City Council, we're very grateful for our public safety officers and our fire department being out there to really be able to, you know, be of great, outstanding service in our community. We pride ourselves on being a caring community in Albany, and this really shows these actions that took place on how we are a very caring community. And mostly for the citizens that came, and you risked your life to be able to help someone else. And that is an act that any community would be so proud of having you be a resident in our communities. We really thank you. Thank you for all you've done, and we really commend you for your actions. But we're proud of those actions you did, and we thank you. We're very grateful, so thank you. Okay, and actually, next on our agenda is a proclamation, and I think our fire department would probably even like to hear this proclamation. And it's probably, you have come across many of these certain situations that I'm about to read here, so if you kind of bear with me here. This is a proclamation for congenital heart defect awareness month for February 2015. Whereas congenital heart defects, CHDs, occur when a baby's heart fails to form properly during her early pregnancy, and in most cases, the cause is unknown, although scientists feel both genetic and environmental factors play a role. And whereas there are approximately 35 different types of CHDs, and they are the most common birth defect and leading cause of birth defect-related deaths. And whereas it is estimated that 40,000 babies with CHDs are born in the United States each year, which equates to one in every 125 babies. And whereas although some babies will be diagnosed at birth, newborns are not routinely screened for CHDs, and pregnant women are not routinely tested for CHDs. And whereas some CHDs may be treated with surgery, medicine, and/or devices such as artificial valves and pacemakers. And in the last 25 years, advances in the treatment of heart defects have enabled half a million U.S. children with serious CHDs to survive into adulthood. And whereas many cases of sudden cardiac death in young athletes are caused by undiagnosed CHDs and childhood onset heart disease. Now therefore, Sharon Canopamare, the City of Albany, Oregon hereby proclaim February 2015 to be congenital heart defect awareness month in Albany, and encourage all citizens to recognize that early detection is critical to the successful treatment of congenital heart defects. In witness whereof, I here and to step my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 11th day of February 2015. Okay? All right. Well, thank you, folks, for listening to that. It's something that many of us probably don't realize. There's many families that are faced with that, and we do have a family here in Albany that is dealing with that with their child. And so our hearts go out to this family, and we're pleased to be able to at least give this awareness out to our citizens. Okay? Thank you. And seeing with that, we'll go ahead and let, take a couple-minute break and let the folks be able to leave if they're, most likely, our fire department's not wanting to hang around for the council meeting, so thank you.
Particularly since they're on duty tonight.
Yeah. No. If there's a fire, if there's a fire, I want them out there where they can get.
I'm starting to have a heart attack if you had a plan.
Yeah. It's picking up our decision. Depends where it is. Well, true. But if they were all in the truck and in the vehicles, they'd be quicker.
It was at Timber Hill in Corvallis.
Oh, Timber Hill. Oh. What's the point?
This summer, yeah. It was an arson fire. They really got, really moved from a slightly rural area into the urban Timber Hill development area really fast.
Well, we're back to normal.
It's an interesting decision, Andy, some of the, you know.
The usual suspects is, you know, there's more than just the usual suspects.
He hadn't responded with the whole crew. Fire we have rather than one that might happen.
Obviously, in that case, the right decision.
She's certainly certainly, I mean, her closest neighbor, I think, is my, well, not closest, because she's got her.
He just needs to get some hearing aids.
Hey. So next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding a proposal to rename two public streets. The applicant is the City of Albany. I call to order this legislative public hearing at, well, both clocks are off, so 7:33 PM. And at this time, I call for the staff report, and Mike Planner. Mike Leffler?
Tonight, the council will be considering the renaming of two public streets in the Edgewood Estates subdivision. This subdivision is generally located east of Waverly Drive and south of Grand Prairie Road. Edgewood Estates was platted in 1975 and included the dedication of these two streets, which dead-ended at the adjacent property to the east. The two streets were named on the platte as Wilt Court and Bartley Place. The typical naming convention for streets uses suffixes such as Court and Place to represent streets that have no outlet. Such streets usually terminate in cul-de-sacs or other types of turnarounds at the end. Wilt Court and Bartley Place do not currently terminate with any type of turnaround because the streets were expected to be extended into the adjacent land when it was developed. Recently, the adjacent property has been platted as the Vreeland Estates subdivision, and this new subdivision includes rights of way that connect to Wilt Court and Bartley Place, as shown on map number three on page 13 of your agenda packet, which is a composite of the two adjacent subdivisions. Because these streets will now be through streets that do not dead-end, the designations of Court and Place are not appropriate and could cause confusion for emergency services, postal carriers, and visitors. The plating of these new streets alerted staff to this street naming conflict. The streets that were platted with the Vreeland Estates subdivision, which make these connections, were given the appropriate naming of Wilt Avenue and Bartley Street to properly indicate that they are not dead-end streets. The Oregon revised statutes require that the planning commission make a recommendation to the city council for any city-street renaming proposal. The statute, shown on page 14 of your packet, states that if the planning commission makes such a recommendation, then the city council must hold a public hearing to consider the renaming and make a final determination on whether or not to approve the renaming of the streets. The only criterion for the street renaming in the statute is that the council determine that the renaming is in the best interest of the city. Last week, the planning commission held a public hearing and voted to recommend that the council approve the proposed street renaming. The proposed renaming of these two sections of streets will change the addresses of six properties. The six affected property owners were notified by mail in advance of this public hearing. No one from the public spoke at this public hearing in front of the planning commission, but staff did receive one letter after that meeting, and the letter was included in your packet on page 15. Ordinances have been prepared for the renaming of the two streets, and if the council chooses to approve the renaming, the ordinances will be sent to the appropriate county departments as required by the state statute. If council opts to deny the proposed renaming, staff will prepare a resolution of that decision and bring it back to the council.
Are there questions, Mike? Yeah, Ray?
I just noticed on the additional colored items that we received on the diocese tonight, showing the before and after, and it shows four of the addresses highlighted in yellow before the changes. I'm presuming that the other two were at the top end, showing 3,008, 3,009 on what was Wilt Court.
I believe that's correct, although I think that is a map that was prepared by Mike Tribou, the fire department. I'm not familiar with it.
Because there's only, you said six, there's only showing four on the map that you gave.
Right. There's four off of Bartley Place and two off of Wilt Court, so.
Yeah, so that would be the two then. Okay. Gotcha.
I think Mike Tribou, fire marshal, is here. He had a couple of comments he wanted to make in addition to the, I think, that.
Counselor Mike Tribou, fire marshal. This came to our attention again, as it says during the platte. I need to make a comment. During the planning commission hearing, I made a comment that we are trying to, we are attempting to just change the name of Bartley Place to Bartley Street, and that we would not be changing the addressing, or the actual numbers, address numbers. However, I misspoke. That's not going to be true. The developer came in and wanted to get addressing done, actually, assigned address numbers to the lots this week, and as we were doing that, we found another issue with the addressing on the existing Bartley Place that's going to cause us to also change their address numbers. The additional information I provided in your yellow folders was to illustrate that we are going to have to, or we are requesting, along with the name change, that we'd also be changing the address numbers. I can make technology work here. So again, that was the, what it was looked like before, as it sits right now, prior to the development coming in. As approved, this is an overlay that shows the new development tying into the existing houses. The area of interest that we're concerned about is this area right here. We have Wilt Court up here, and we have Bartley Place down here, and these are the four on Bartley, and the two properties that are addressed off of Wilt. Those are the two areas that we're addressing with the ordinance. As it sits right now, this is, these are the new streets. And as stated, the plattes, the streets have been named correctly in accordance with city standard. That was established back in 2004. It's now Wilt Avenue, and the extension would be Bartley Street. So our proposal would cause, these are the new addresses that fit within the current grid for the new streets. The addresses that we're going to change, in addition to, would be those four in yellow, and then the street name changes that would make everything congruent and line up. Do you have any questions?
I'm kind of confused myself. So I guess I'm really surprised why they were even numbered that in the beginning with the three Os. And then, if you're going to change Bartley to the higher number, which would kind of coincide with what's on Mountain View as it's heading east, why wouldn't you do that on Wilt?
On Wilt, the, they were, addresses generally increase in this part of town. When you go from east, or from west to east, they increase in number, and from north to south.
Right.
The addresses off of Wilt are fine. They were properly numbered, or numbered in accordance with the grid, even though it was going to be a dead-end street. So they properly align east to west and do not require a number change. So we would just be changing the street name.
So the 3,000 number there for Wilt is considered more the north-south, it's going by the north-south grid?
It's going by the east-west grid. It's increasing. So it, they add, they, even though they seem to be facing their corner lots, they could have chosen at the time that they came in to pick either, they addressed off of Bartley, I mean, excuse me, off of Bartley Drive or Wilt Avenue. They chose to go off of Wilt Avenue and were properly numbered at that time.
And so Mountain View, those numbers then are running from the west-east grid then?
No, Mountain View Drive is north-south.
The north-south.
Right. If you notice over here, 36th Avenue, it's been newly named, that's the 3,600 block going north-south.
Okay.
And so as you go down south, you can see this number here, if they choose, this is a corner lot, so we've reserved two addresses for them, depending on if the property owner wants to address off of 36th or off of Mountain View. So we've assigned it 3672 if they choose the north-south or go off of Mountain View. And that would tie into these, and also 3657 on the other side of the street, and it lines up with the existing houses that are south of that on Mountain View.
Okay. Wow, yeah.
The problem on Bartley Street was they were addressed as if that was an east-west street.
Okay. Okay.
And so, what happened is they're currently increasing as you go south to north. If council was to choose to leave that as Bartley Place, then what we would have, and let's say that option would be to have Bartley Street be, and the new development named Bartley Place, we might minimize the impact to the existing property owners, excuse me. We'd still have to change their numbers because then they would be addressed in the wrong direction.
Hmm, okay. It is confusing for this neighborhood because it's the way it kind of comes, starts going, you know, it starts more south when it comes from Waverly and heads up more, going up towards more north. So it's, I always look at it, you think that it'd be a complete even east-west, but it's not. It's really angling, those streets, but, yeah.
And that's, I'm trying to make lemonade out of lemons.
Confusing me, yeah.
And in trying to set it up as best we can, unfortunately, we've tried, I've worked every way I could to minimize the impact to the, to all the property owners. Unfortunately, I haven't found a way to do it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Rich, you have a question?
Yes. It's my understanding that the city is actually who gives the numbers to the county. Is that correct?
Right, yeah. For what the council agrees upon goes to the county.
Right. Now, when it happens, it kind of happens all at once. It's, you know, it's, you had this one, now you have that one. It's not something that changes over time. It's something that, one day it's one, and the next day it's something different.
That's correct. Once the decision is made to readdress, give a new address number, then we send, the city sends out a notification to the postal service, 911 center, utility companies, and the counties, the affected county.
So it is then the responsibility of the homeowner to change all their everything over at whatever expense that is, and whatever trouble that is, probably more than anything else.
That's correct.
Is there any system that the city has to make that easier on them? I mean, they did what they were supposed to do, and it's us doing it to them because somebody next door wants to have, wants to build a bunch of houses. I mean, it's, you know.
I don't have any specific, I mean, obviously, the council would wish to do that. I currently don't have anything built into the system to compensate or to assist, other than try to work with the property owners and minimize the impact where I can.
I mean, the question for me is, I mean, we're doing something to them that they didn't ask to have happen, and they didn't do anything wrong or right or otherwise. Is there a system within the, within the city someplace to say, hey, when this kind of stuff comes up, can we extend hand? Because, I mean, it's not something you can just, okay, I'll use the rest of my business cards. You have to change them, you have to throw them away, you get new ones, because if they use the address on it, it doesn't show up at your place after six months.
Yeah.
Counsel Calum, I can give you the same answer I did, I think, a week or two ago, when the issue came up of, you know, are we setting precedent by helping people as we, the council made the decision, you know, with the flood insurance program, for example. As a council, you are in a position, if you would like to do that. I'm not aware, I've never heard of a program like that for readdressing, but it's council choice.
Well, if you're, if you're a person who is a professional, and you have business cards and stationery, and, you know, it could be, you know, a couple hundred bucks. Plus, you know, just the hassle of doing it, and, you know, I don't, I don't expect that there would be something where we would decide we were going to give them recompense for, but up to the point where, because it's not something you could, you have to then go spend the money. You can't, you can't just let it slide. Because once we do it, it's done.
Bill? And then Bessie.
I just don't understand the numbering system, and, you know, never have. I don't know why they skip so many numbers, but, see if my pointer works. No, it doesn't show up on the screen. Interesting.
Or Bill.
Well, anyway, if you look at Bartley Court, there's, there's two homes there, 2960, 2982. You go across Bartley Drive, and now you're going to be in the 3,600s. And there's 24 numbers between 3698 and the next-door house at 3,674. Then it jumps 36 numbers to go from 3,674 to 3,678. I understand you can't number the houses, one, two, three, four, five, but, you know, I think it goes way beyond what Rich is talking about. I can see mail not being delivered, and that people don't pay a bill, and they're stuck with late fees, and it could just, excuse my French, I think it's going to be a living hell. And I really am having a hard time supporting this.
Bessie?
Yeah, as someone who has had this happen to them, and where I used to work, people would come in and say, well, you know, I didn't move, but I've got to change my address. And there's never been any, anybody help anyone or anything like that. It's just something that, you know, unfortunately happens. It's a pain, because the only thing you can do is put a forwarding address at the post office for your old address to make sure it gets to your new address. And, you know, if it doesn't have to be done, I'd say no, but it sounds like the planning commission molded over and said yes. But I, too, I mean, it's just a pain to get everything changed, just because we want to, I mean, there's not that many houses there, so I don't see the big rush to do it, so.
So do you have more questions of staff? We still need to have the public hearing?
No, I'm sorry.
You want to wait on that?
Different issue.
Any more on staff? Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. So for anyone at first would be to testify on the proposal, and I had one person that signed up, and was it Patrick Ryan?
I wouldn't want to testify on that. I thought that was a sign-up issue.
Okay, so I kind of thought so, so it's on a different item. Okay, thank you. So is there anyone here that would like to testify on this hearing? Okay, not seeing anyone. So with that, I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:50 PM. Now, council, you can deliberate or ask staff questions, or what would you like to do? Bill?
Well, as I dig into this a little deeper, I just reread the letter from Dr. Kyle and Haley Rutledge. And staff can correct me, but I'm going to guess when they wrote this letter, they didn't realize their address was going to change as well. They make a pretty compelling argument that it could stay as Bartley Place, but, you know, can staff answer that? Were they aware at the time that's, address would change?
I doubt it. I didn't know, to be honest with you.
As I said, when I talk, when I spoke before the planning commission, we did not know we were going to have to change the number also. I became aware of that on Monday, when the developer requested that we assign specific addresses to the lots. When we started doing that, we found no other way that we could make it work without doing that because of the way that Bartley Place was originally addressed.
You don't have to, a phone street name that you're dealing with, on the statute.
Thank you.
Just a question on the numbering. Why would the new developer take priority on the numbering scheme versus what's already in place?
Well, originally, I don't know if it's an issue of priority. When they came in wanting to interconnect in the streets, streets that were originally, from what I understand, were planned to be dead-end streets. The development was to extend the streets through. So at that point in time, we have to look at the address grid and say, okay, how can we make it work? The first thing that we do is we try to make it fit within the existing layout, minimal changes to the existing, work around. The problem with Bartley Court in particular, or Place in particular, was it was addressed as a north-south, or, excuse me, as an east-west street, even though it starts to project north-south because it wasn't going to go very far. It was going to dead-end right there. Now that they've extended all the way to the north, it's now lined out to be a north-south street. That's causing the numbers to change. Originally, like I said, I tried not to have to address, change their numbers. I thought I was just going to be able to change a court to a street, and I unfortunately became aware of that when we tried to pound out the specific addresses. I could not make that work.
I think Jim's going to explain to you statute here.
Well, the question the mayor was asking me was whether or not there was a need to re-notify the homeowners now that we're going to be potentially changing the house numbers, and I don't think that there is legally. You can decide to do it if you wish. The statute deals specifically with street names, not with numbers. And when you look at the way things ordinarily are done, you may see the street names when the plats are submitted to you, but you would never see the house numbers. The house numbering is done administratively by staff, and so at this level, you don't customarily get involved in numbering decisions. And the proposal before you tonight is numbering, or, I'm sorry, is the name, not the numbering. The numbering would still be an administrative function. I think what you're hearing from staff is that a chance to correct misinformation that was inadvertently given at the planning commission level, that street or house numbers were not going to change. But really, the issue before you is street names. But again, you're the council. If you want to change the issue, you can.
Yeah. Rich, and then Floyd.
It occurs to me that this would not be happening if it were not for the fact that there are a bunch of houses being built next door. That is what's causing it, and maybe that's who ought to pay for it.
Respectfully, I don't know a way you and your land use code can impose that cost legally. The people who own the property adjoining can develop that property in accordance with the development code. And we can't impose an additional cost on them because we want the streets to tie together, and we would like to change the name from Place to Corridor, Street, or whatever. If you don't like the change, you can simply leave the street names as they are by deciding it's not in the best interest to change the street names. Whether or not staff then proceeds to try to renumber is really an administrative decision of staff unless you want to give them direction that you don't want them to renumber, and I'm sure that they will follow your direction. It may not fit the numbering, I mean, I submit that when an elected body gets involved in doing the job you hire staff to do, you end up with bad outcomes, but that's your choice, not mine.
Floyd?
Staff can help my memory. I think sometime within the last 12 months, didn't we have something similar down on Irvine? And there was four or five folks involved.
There was part of Irvine, and I think 25th or 6th, and then in North Albany, there was North Albany Road that became, I want to say 23rd Avenue, because there was an issue with North Albany Road initially being north-south and then turning to be east-west, and I'm not privy to all the addressing rules, but that was an issue. So yes, we did do another street renaming fairly recently.
And do we know what the impact to the property owners was on the, like, the Irvine, Irvine corridor?
In essence, it was your address is changed. And to some degree, we could change Place to Street and leave the number the same. I would think they're going to have to go through the same process to change their address regardless of whether the numbers change or not.
Okay. Thank you. And to the fire marshal, you know, the big driver for this is, in my opinion, public safety response.
Correct.
Given what we now have in our units, is there a way to flag an existing that is misnumbered?
There's always a way, but I don't know if I want to rely on technology that much. I mean, we do use GPS units, our GPS in our, in our units with our mapping system. The problem with this one is it's going to be completely upside down for the entire length of the street. So many times, we use it as an aid, but we don't glue ourselves to watching that. Once we get in the area, the proximity of where we're going, we take our eyes while we're focusing on what's going on around us. And so, at that point in time, you have an expectation that as you're going down a road, whether you're going north-south or east-west, that the numbers are going to increase in some manner. And what's going to happen is we're going to go down that road. We can flag it, and we'll create an anomaly, but I, if that's what council wishes, we can, but our staff's recommendation is not to do that.
It seems like any time we get outside of the typical rectangular street grid, and we get into a curvilinear system, this gets very complicated very quickly. And the bottom line is, it's a public safety response question. Do we want our police and fire to be able to respond to the right house and not get lost?
I ran that, I ran that option by my boss, and he said, he asked me to proceed.
Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do? You have an ordinance that's on page five for the Wilt Avenue one, and you have an ordinance for the Bartley Street on page seven.
Should I read the whole thing?
Would you like the, would you like me to read the first reading?
This is an ordinance declaring a street name change for a public street dedicated and named on the Edgewood Estates subdivision plat in Lynn County and declaring an emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, second reading.
Aye.
Oh, there was a no?
That was a no.
Okay, so we won't have a second reading, okay?
Want me to read the next ordinance?
Want to read the next one?
An ordinance declaring a street name change for a public street dedicated and named on the Edgewood Estates subdivision plat in Lynn County and declaring an emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, all right. This will come back next council meeting for a second reading. Okay, and then action from there. Okay, thank you.
Question?
Uh-huh.
Are the people who are going to have their numbers changed going to be notified?
I kind of hope they are.
Of the notification of the number change?
Yes, we'll make sure that happens.
Yeah. I think that would be nice.
That's why I said, no.
Yep.
Well, I don't know that they haven't been at this point, Rich, but we'll make sure they are.
Okay. And then next is business from the public, and, and I think we had Mr. Ryan, did you want to speak during this? Was there an agenda item that you were wanting to speak about? Because this would...
...something outside of what I put on the street.
Okay. So this would be the time to come up and speak if you wanted to speak during business from the public. Thank you. And if you can state your name and...
My name is Pat Ryan.
Okay.
I'm a contractor.
And if you can state your address, too.
Pardon?
Your address?
6615 Abraham Lane, Albany, 97321.
Okay, thank you.
We're a contractor. We've done some work, and we recently done some work in the city of Albany. And it was kind of a somewhat difficult project, and we, there were quite a few issues, and some plan changes, and some significant increases in the cost of the project. It's led to some payment issues, and, you know, late payment. And the reason I'm here is not to talk so much about that as to talk about a law that's come into effect in the state of Oregon recently, and it seems to be missed by a lot of jurisdictions and, you know, different public agencies. And it's called ORS 279C 570. It's the Prompt Payment Act. And it, it pretty much limits any organization in the state of Oregon that's a public organization from failing to communicate promptly if they have an issue with a payment. I have the ORS here if I should turn it into, you know, the city clerk, I don't know.
That'd be great.
And, you know, it just says that it is the policy of the state of Oregon that all payments due on public improvement contracted owed by a contracting agency shall be paid promptly. No contracting agency is exempt from the provisions of this section. And then it tells you that, and this is item four of it, it says, "When an invoice is filled out incorrectly, when there is any defect or impropriety in any submitted invoice, or when there is a good faith dispute, the contracting agency shall so notify the contractor within 15 days stating the reason or reasons the invoice is defective or improper, or the reasons for the dispute. A defective or improper invoice corrected by the contractor within seven days of being notified by the contracting agency may not cause a payment to be made later than specified in this section unless interest is also paid." And this section specifies 30 days. Payments have to be made within 30 days. And this is any contractor that's working for, whether it's Albany, or the state of Oregon, or any agency. And we recently done a lot of work for the state of Oregon, and they were publishing bids that said, "Don't bid this if you don't want to be paid in less than 45 days." But the law actually said they couldn't do that, and, you know, so there became quite an issue, and I kind of... And I kind of started, you know, finding this happens just about everywhere I go, that local jurisdictions just don't think they have to pay their bills quite as promptly as the law says they should. So I'm here to just point out to the city of Albany that its agencies, you know, Public Works or whoever that hire employees, have a fiscal responsibility to pay their contractors even if there's issues. They have to resolve those issues in a prompt manner, you know, assuming that there's not defective work or something of that nature. But it's just a question of, you know, ambivalence about whether we want to make a payment. You know, they can't do that anymore. It used to be done all the time, and Mr. Colvin most likely knows about it, and it's just, it's just, here's the issue, you know. We don't want to pay you right now, so we're not going to pay you maybe 90 days from now, maybe 120 days from now, maybe a year from now. But now the law says you can't do that anymore. So all I'm saying is that I've come to Albany, I've done some work in Albany, and we're, you know, waiting for payments. So we're addressing that. We finally, you know, received a, not necessarily an explanation, but just a comment, not a, you know, a couple of comments about what was happening. And one of them, you know, caused a payment to be reduced without explanation. You know, they were 60 days after the billing. That is not the way the law works, and that's why I'm here. I'll iron out the issues with the agency, but I think that the city itself, Mr. Herr, anybody that's here that's involved in Public Works and Contracting needs to be aware of this, that the city has to pay its bills within 30 days. And so that's why I'm here.
Okay, all right.
Question?
Uh-huh.
Do you know when that law went into effect?
It's been in effect now for about five years.
Oh, really?
It's been around quite a while, just nobody knows about it.
Okay.
You would be amazed at how, well, you're not amazed, I'm sure you know all about it, but it's just the agencies that just routinely ignore it, so...
Well, Mr. Ryan, if I may, just to respond, I wasn't aware of the circumstances here. And we do make every effort to pay our bills promptly. I mean, we do have situations where that doesn't happen, or for a whole variety of reasons. I don't know what happened in your case, but if you'd like to give me a call, I'd be glad to go over it with you and see if we can work it out.
Yeah. The thing is that it doesn't allow you the opportunity to consider whether you want to do it. It says you have to do it, you know, and so...
Believe me, we make every effort to pay our bills promptly.
Right.
Again, there are times when there may be a slip and it doesn't happen, but I think in general, most of our vendors are pretty satisfied.
And I'm sure they are, you know. This issue was a little, because the original bid engineer's estimate was more than double before the project was done. And, you know, it's just budget problems, I'm sure, but nonetheless...
I've got to correct that one. In my 38 years of doing legal work for the city of Albany, I have never experienced a circumstance or had a circumstance brought to my attention where the city delayed paying a bill because the city had budgetary problems or was wanting to screw with the contractor or was...
Well, I didn't say that. I'm not taking any other words from you.
But you just said budgetary problems. We have, all expenditures for public works projects are budgeted and authorized by the council. Payments are made promptly unless there is a legal justification for a delay because of a problem with the work. I'm probably getting into Mark's area, but the notion, the concept that we would just...
Well, let me point something out.
That we would simply, for budgetary reasons, choose not to pay people is just not consistent with my experience.
All right, well...
Mark, did you want to say something?
Well, I think there is more to this story as far as there are some issues that the city is ironing out with the project. It is not a matter of, we just don't want to pay. We are working with the contractor to try to resolve that, obviously not to Mr. Ryan's satisfaction, but staff is not just ignoring this and saying, "Boy, we're just not, we don't have time to pay," or "We don't have budget." That is not the case.
Okay. This is my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I have no good reason. I know that the first time the contract came in, it had to come in front of this council to be approved. Since then, it has added over 30% since it was approved, even when it was, you know, it was substantially higher than engineer's estimate at the time. It's gone up since then, and it's more than 25%. In my opinion, I know something about this, that's what the sticking point is, because an effort has been made recently to reduce the budget to 22.6% without explanation. I've gotten responses that are, have multiple different sums as what the contract is worth, and I've got them right here if you want to look at them.
Again, we are, we're working through the issues.
And up until today, not till today, up until Friday of last week, the first communications we had about it, well after the completion of the project, well after the 15 days, you know, it's, we may be talking about, you know, completely different projects, too. I don't know. If you're aware of my project, maybe you are.
I believe I am.
Well, then, I can show you some documents if you want to take a look at.
At some time, if you'd like to contact me, I'd be happy to do that.
Oh, why don't we set up an appointment right now?
Why don't, I can't do that in session here, but you're welcome to email me, and we'll set that up.
Right. In our side, I'm pleased to see that our city staff is making sure that, being good stewards of our money and making sure that contracts are fully fulfilled and before they do finalize a contract. So that's, that's pretty much what a lot of the city council wants to make sure our staff does.
Absolutely. And I agree with you, Mayor, Madam Mayor. The project was accepted on December 19th and taken over and put into use. Not a single comment has come to us about it. I have been told by people that know that they've received quite a few compliments about the work. You know, it doesn't seem, it's not an issue of issues that I'm aware of, that anybody's made to me other than money.
Yeah. And, well, maybe if you leave your contact information, or actually, your phone number is here on the sign-up, and then I'll give it to our Mark Shepherd, and then he can call you in the morning and set up a time to me.
That would be great.
Okay.
Communications is what's important.
Okay, yeah.
I really didn't come here to point fingers. What I, my real agenda here is to get this, you know, recognized.
And your phone number is 503-932, or is that a five?
932-1868.
Okay. All right. He will call you tomorrow, set up a time.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Should I leave this, sir?
That would be wonderful. Or you can give that to the clerk. Yeah, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from business from the public that would like to come forward this evening? Okay. All right, not seeing anyone. Okay. Counsel, we have a, you have another ordinance, and this one's on page 17, and this is the item that came to us on Monday from police chief, and this was over some amendments to the secondhand dealer and transit merchant. Would you like the city attorney to read the first reading?
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code Title 7.90, Secondhand Dealers and Transit Merchants, repealing ordinance number 5837 and declaring an emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
I am opposed.
Okay. Well, it looks like this one will be held over for a second reading next council meeting.
And I'd like to tell you why I'm opposed.
Okay. Yep, go ahead, Dick.
At our Monday meeting, I was under the impression that the changes, and I don't know whether it's a change or not, were going to be highlighted. And I find now, in thinking about it and doing some inquiring, that, or hence is one of the changes, I don't know if it's a change or not, occurs in, oh, what do we call it? Paragraph 7.90, 010, and about, a dealer does not include, item C under that paragraph, and then some whatever, four on the outline, that a scrap metal recycling business, let's see, a dealer does not include, a scrap metal recycling business is defined by ORS 165. And then it goes on, that which the regulated property is returned to base component and not resold as regulated property. And apparently, what that means is that a metal recycling business cannot sort out these stuff that could be reused if it is part of the regulated properties. And that's back here on page 27, 28, and includes such things as, you know, our garden, garden tools. So I guess if I had a bunch of stuff I was trying to clean out of my garage, and then one included a rake, he couldn't take that out and sell it as a piece of equipment. He'd have to sell it to whoever melts down stuff and melt the rake down. They could use it that way. Includes such things as sporting equipment, bicycles, kayaks, golf clubs, outboard motors, boats, accessories. So I, at the meeting on Bundy, I was thinking about Bercham's Metals and some items that I've bought there over the years. A floor jack that was worn to the point where it wasn't usable, but I was able to fix up the wheels, and I was able to use it. A while back, one of my, my skill saw broke down, and I thought, well, he might have a junk skill saw out there that I could recover the parts that I would need to fix it, and surprisingly, he did. But apparently, with this, change to the ordinance or whatever, couldn't do that, have to send it to the melters to melt it down. So I thought I'd, and I want to say that Jay Bercham had absolutely nothing to do with my concern about this, absolutely nothing. I called him up. I went out and I took a look at his operation and I discussed this with him. And if you're worried about somebody going out and selling stolen items, don't think about that again. He's got security cameras, he's got people watching him, he takes, he gets the license plate off their car, that number, he gets their identification numbers, he sees what they're selling, if something looks suspicious, he contacts you. So I, for the life of me, wonder why you want to bring this kind of stuff down. He said that recycling stuff like this isn't a big thing for him financially. It supports one of his employees, and they do enough in business, and it supports that employee who does a good job of not only knowing what stuff is worth, but going out and finding people who might buy some of this stuff. So I, again, think it's a real shame to have this included in here. And I asked him, "Well, what would you pay for a motorized power drill," something like that? Well, he said, "We buy that as, what do they call it, dirty motors, I guess." I guess they, when they buy electric motors, they, there's a little bit difference in price, whether it's a new or clean motor, or whether it's an old junky, dirty motor.
It's electric motors or dirty aluminum.
Dirty aluminum?
Dirty aluminum. It's...
Well, he was talking about dirty motors.
Yeah.
So I'm sure there's clean and dirty, very kinds of stuff. But they get between 10 cents, 12 cents a pound for that kind of stuff. So I went home, weighed a power drill I've got, weighed three pounds. So if I took that in there, hoping to increase my financial situation, three pounds times 10 cents, about 30 cents, what I'd get for that power drill. So if I was stealing stuff and looked for a place to get rid of it, I think Bercham's would be about the last place I'd go. So I'm hoping that we can reconsider this and maybe think some more about whether we can allow this stuff to be recycled in our local economy. And being out there, I thought of various times I've been there, and one person I thought of was Jerry Andrews. You know, the, should have been, should be one of our most famous citizens. He's the magician's magician. He invented magical tricks that you see people do. I can't imagine figuring out how the magicians do the tricks, let alone how in heaven's name they ever invented this stuff. So I'm voting no. I'm hoping we can have some more discussion on this, and I'm hoping we can let Bercham's continue to do that part of their business.
Okay, well, we'll be taking this up in two weeks, so, yeah, Rich?
I also had a little heartburn with this, and I guess Dick and I agree on something here. It's a banner day.
It's kind of an amazing night, isn't it?
From my perspective, I think this is, particularly with Bercham's, because they're the only scrapper in town of any, you know, they're individuals, but he's the guy that was the driving force to fix the scrap industry.
I was about to mention that, yeah.
And, you know, if I walked, was walking in front of him, and I pulled my keys out and a $100 bill fell out, he would be running over there grabbing it, saying, "Hey, Rich, you know, this is not someone you worry about." But more to the point with this, consider if, if you have a thief taking something from somebody, if they know that if they take it to a secondhand dealer, they're going to be pictured and they have to sign or they have to do all the things, they need, they will be identified. And if they decide at that point that they're going to get rid of it, I mean, getting the 30 cents or 50 cents or whatever it is is not going to help them. I spoke with Jay today, and I was, the other, the other night, I was talking about the stuff that he gets from Hewlett-Packard, and he told me about a table saw he got from, within the last little while, from people out on Oakville Road, a business. And he had to take it apart and throw it away, even though there was, it was completely If there is the possibility, once, once you take that, whatever it is, and break it down into its component pieces, there is zero possibility that the person who had it stolen is going to get it. Now, if it goes through and there are pictures and there are someone, you know, sees something, "Wait a minute, that doesn't make sense," there is at least then the possibility, even albeit maybe a small possibility, that the person might get it back. So it's my thought that if you pay scrap price for something, there is a big difference between, hey, you threw it in the, in the scrap bin and are getting so much a ton for it, you know, nobody's going to steal stuff and do that. If they are going to get rid of it, they might. They might just throw it in and get them so that no one will see them. But there maybe should be an exclusion for getting, paying scrap price for something. And understand, there are things in what I was talking about, you know, dirty copper, clean copper, insulated copper, I mean, there's a whole list of things that when you take something to a scrapper, to a scrap yard, they have a, you know, motors high at 25 cents a pound in good times. Machinery is like 15 or 20 cents a pound. It's, it's not like you're getting real dollars for it. So the person is not going to want to go steal something and go take it there. However, when it ends up in his scrap bins and he paid scrap price for it, I think not being able to use it as the item is a waste. He made it very clear to me that he was, that he had agreed, "Okay, we'll do this," that he didn't want to, you know, complain.
Well, he did, yeah, me, too. I had to kind of twist his ear to tell him...
I think we need to do something to make that distinction.
Yeah, and I want to say, it's partly a selfish point of view on my part. You look at my garage, and you'll see most of the stuff I got... You look at my garage and you'll see most of the stuff I got is used stuff or stuff that I put together out of used parts and, well, these days for the fun of it. But back when, I couldn't afford a good enough compressor to paint a car. And I painted a couple of cars with some compressor and motor and tank and stuff that I cobbled together and some I got from Bercham's, some other places. And I think it'd be really sad if people in our community who don't have the financial capability that most of us have, wouldn't have the capability, opportunity to do stuff that they might like to do because they just can't afford the tools.
Bill?
When we first started considering this ordinance, I guess last year, one of my thoughts at the time was to include a sunset clause so that the ordinance went out of effect or whatever the terminology would be after, after a year unless council continues to vote it as being an ordinance. I changed my thinking on that, but at the same time, I was hoping that, you know, we try it for a year, see how things work and make some adjustments and so forth. So I was a little surprised when, you know, a few months later, we have, have these proposed changes. So in looking at him and listening to your explanation the other night, it started to make a little sense. You know, you mentioned the ammunition and some stores, there is white out in the open. And I've been in stores where, as an example, shotgun shells are right there on the shelf. So I can see where there's a rash of shotgun shells being stolen. Joe Blow's Pawn Shop is buying shotgun shells right and left and like Detective Gibbney pointed out, you kind of connect the dots and you find that guy. You can't necessarily identify shotgun shells as, you know, a unique item, but I can understand how the process would work. You know, I, like Dick and Rich, am struggling with, with this issue as it applies to the, to the scrap dealers. And I don't know if there's any specific antidotes you can tell us that relate to that.
He's allowed to conduct his business. Only thing we ask is that if he's going to deal in regulated property where he wants to resell it, that he just hold the property for fourteen days, notify us of that and then sell it like any other secondhand dealer has to do. So this was actually brought up, brought to us by another secondhand dealer complaining, saying that if I have to comply with the ordinance, why doesn't Bercham Metals have to comply with the ordinance? And, because we didn't even know that Bercham Metals was even doing that. So when we found out, that's when Travis Gibbney went over there and talked to Jay about it. But this wasn't necessarily about Bercham Metals. We're looking at all scrap metal dealers, because we could have another business come in this community who's also dealing in scrap metal and we want to make sure the playing field is the same for everybody. I mean, we're not just trying to single any particular group out. We're saying that if we're requiring the secondhand dealers to do this, then we should also require the scrap metal dealers to do it if they're going to buy and resell regulated property. If they're going to take it down to base component and then just sell it, then they don't have to report it. We're just asking that they report it to us, hold it for fourteen days and they can resell it.
I guess the difference is, like Dick and Rich pointed out, if I've got a skill saw that I, that's working, I'm going to get more at a pawn shop than I am at the junkyard. And so I have a hard time believing that the problem is people selling, selling stolen property to the junkyard.
Well, they could go to the pawn shop, know that it's, they stole it, figure out it's not working, the pawn shop won't buy it from them, and then turn around and take it to the metal recyclers to get rid of it.
And they'll fix it up.
And then, just to get anything for it. And I understand there's a less likelihood of that happening because of the law that the scrap metal dealers have to deal with, because they don't give them a cash there. They do have to mail them a check. So there's those things, you know, that are, aren't as likely, but that does happen.
Okay, Bessie?
So, tell me if I understand this. With a table saw example, someone has one that kind of works, but they're, they just want to get rid of it, take it to Berchams. As long as he holds it for fourteen days, does the process-
Reports it.
Then he can sell it as a table saw.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. See, I was understanding the way it was being talked is that, no, he had to break it down and couldn't sell it for anything, so.
If he, well, it's because he doesn't want to have to comply with the ordinance. He told us he doesn't want to have to register, doesn't have to comply with it. So what he was going to do is no longer resell regulated property, just break it down and then get rid of it like regular scrap metal.
And that's his choice.
And that's his choice.
That's right, exactly.
The other thing I wanted to say is I think it's unfortunate that this is, that this change is being tied too much to a particular individual business. While I think we all have substantial respect for Mr. Bercham and the way he conducts his business, I think the chief is right, that you write your codes as if you had blinders on. There's a reason why the lady liberty, lady justice is blind. It's because the rules apply to everyone without regard to who they are. That's the goal. And, and so when the chief and the police department propose these changes and try to set up a system, we endeavor to do it in a way that is not talking about how individuals are doing it, but whether or not a scrap dealer should be exempted from the law if in fact he's not dealing in scrap. If he's dealing it in scrap, it doesn't apply.
He paid for it.
Well, let me ask you this, let me tell you this. Does the pawn shop guy, you go out and get the license plate number of the car, the guy that comes in, does the pawn shop dealer get the identification of the guy that comes in and sells stuff to it?
He has to get the identification. He's not necessarily getting a license plate number of the vehicle that brings in. He's required to get his ID and report that.
That's the step, really, it's the only difference, Dick, is that Jay, while he may be gathering that information, he's not reporting it. Whereas a secondhand dealer under the ordinance has to report it. And what Jay is saying is he'd rather not do that. It's more trouble to him than it's worth. And that's, that's really the only difference. And it's a choice that he can make.
The difference-
Jay is buying junk. He hates, he doesn't like me to call the stuff junk. Most of it is scrap or junk. And if he pays, what did I say?
Thirty cents.
Ten cents, for, thirty cents for a, a drill or a skill saw that doesn't work anymore, should he have to report that? Should he have to go through all the fall around, all the stuff of, and now he can put it on his shelf there and people like Rich and I can walk through and look at it or Jerry Andrews and say, oh, hey, look at that Acme thread bolt. I could, I could fix up something with that. I could fix up an old vice I've got or whatever. And I see all that just going away and what a shame. So I'm convinced some more of you to think about just figuring away if we can modify this ordinance.
Well, then, maybe we should bring it back to the next work session before our next council meeting so we can address you guys' concerns on it.
Well, I'm already voting no, you have to.
Right. No, but I'm saying we can bring it to the work session.
Go to the work session, the work on it.
Yeah, mhm. Is that okay?
So, the only thing I'd request from the chief, the story that you told us about the ammunition made sense. I can connect the dots on that. As far as the issue with the junk dealers, and I understand what Jim's saying, we're using Berchams as an example, but it would apply to every dealer. I'm not hearing that there's a problem of people selling stolen property to the junk dealers. I'm hearing that one of the dealers has this perception that it's not a level playing field. And yet, you know, what Dick and Rich and I are saying is that if you got a skill saw, you're going to get more for it at the, at the secondhand or the pawn shop than you will as a junk dealer buying it for junk. And so it's not a level playing field. I mean, so what the guy's saying is, somebody idiot sold it cheaper at the junkyard and I would have paid him more, I didn't get an opportunity to buy it. Well, who said these people are smart? I mean, it's just, if you can, if you can demonstrate that there's a problem that we need to address and fix, I would be more interested-
I guess if I had more reporting in, I probably could, but since I don't get the reporting now, I couldn't be able to connect those dots to say I do have certain people that have been going over there and doing that.
Right.
But Jay does do a good job. When he thinks he has something that doesn't look right, he does call us. But this, remember, I'm not trying to, this is not about Berchams Metals. This is about scrap metal dealers in general.
Sure, I understand. But again, when, when a dealer is saying, hey, I don't think the loving, the playing field is level, there were, there was a dealer that when we were discussing this ordinance, wanted garage sales covered.
Oh, yeah.
And so, you know, there's an individual, well, the, the playing field isn't level. They can sell stolen stuff at the garage sales. So-
A few decades back, boy, there was a big push to outlaw privacy. Yeah, but they're just going to make the town unlevel.
Okay, so, Jim, were you going to say anything else or take it to work session?
You know, I know I'm tilting at a windmill. Chief, you owe me for effort. Again, the problem with tying your decision to a particular business's practice is you don't, the fact that Mr. Bercham is an honorable dealer and only pays ten cents a pound for scrap doesn't prevent somebody who wants to become a, who wants to fudge on these things from getting a scrap dealer's license. Maybe he pays ten dollars for that skill saw. So on a price that is competitive with the other secondhand dealers. And he's skirting the law and he's got a way now to sell it or dispose it without reporting. If you believe that there is a value in having people who buy these things secondhand, report it and hold on to them, and that's a judgment, then I understand the motive of the, I mean, the goal of the police is just to make sure that we plug a loophole before somebody is walking through it. Mr. Bercham is not. That's not the point.
This is not about Jay Bercham. This is about scrap dealers who buy something at scrap prices.
But you know that they buy it at scrap prices?
Yeah.
Well, I think we need clarification, because my understanding is Jay did buy items and resold the items, so it wasn't at scrap prices. He was buying some items and reselling. And maybe we need to get that clarified, if he is or not.
But this isn't about Bercham Metals, you know, so-
Right. It's about a scrap dealer.
Correct.
Any scrap dealer.
Correct.
And if you make it so it's any scrap dealer, then Jay just is one of the aldermen, but he's just the only one.
If we're concerned about how much they're paying for it, I mean, there could be a clause in there about they have to pay, you know, scrap metal prices for the product or something like that to help quantify this a little bit more, but I don't know if you want to go there.
How are you going to track that?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to go there. But that's going to be on their word. We wouldn't be able to tell unless we did some type of operation or something to try to-
Well, I think you probably have a lot of questions from the council to get addressed for the, the work session then, so on that. Okay?
Just a comment for the chief to think about prior to the work session. If you go look on page nineteen at C sub four, where the definition to be excluded for scrap metal. If, if we just said a scrap metal recycling business is defined in ORS 165, in which regulated property is purchased at scrap prices, period, that then exempts them when they buy anything at scrap prices. If they pay market price for something across the counter, they're a secondhand dealer. I mean, make it sound, I don't think it's overly complicated.
Yeah, that was my point.
I think we just drop off that is returned to base components and not resold as a regulated property. If they do that, then they're a secondhand dealer.
Yeah.
And then they report. That's their, that's their business choice.
Okay.
Well, I better check a little bigger.
I have no problem with the ammo modification at all.
Well, if suddenly a crime spree develops and stolen stuff, I'd be willing to, yeah, we're sent upon by scrap dealers that are buying stuff.
Yeah.
I'd be willing to change my mind, but-
I, I don't know if we can do this because we have a no vote on the second reading. Is there any value in, if Jim can work with us to change the ordinance tonight as it applies to ammunition?
I see. We're not going to have it.
I would, so you want to?
Well, we had two no votes, so I think we should just get it worked out and bring back the cleaned up language.
I had three no votes.
So, oh, you were too. Okay, yeah. So we'll bring it back.
Wasn't just the trouble makers.
Can I clarify the no votes? It was no from Collins, no from Kellum, and no from Wilson.
Well, it only takes one vote to pull it over two weeks.
Correct, I just need to know who was.
She needs it for the record to know who voted no.
Just need it for the minutes.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay, all right. I think we're done with this item, so thank you, chief. Yep. Okay, council next is adoption of a resolution and you have another coffee to replace the one that was in your packet for page twenty-nine. And Wes, did you want to lead on this one or anything?
This is simply the resolution for the ballot measure that we have been discussing, I think, for some period of time. This represents the recommendation of the Public Safety Facilities Review Committee to lower what was initially a twenty, it was what, twenty-two point three million?
Twenty point three.
Twenty point three, excuse me, last year in November of two thousand thirteen and is now proposed as an eighteen million dollar bond measure to fund improvements that would include a new police and a new fire station.
Okay, council, what would you like to do with this item?
I move adoption of the resolution.
All right, any discussion?
Just, just to point out that the, in the resolution, we're calling for up, not to exceed eighteen million and any subsequent modification to the budget that may be associated with the projects. We have authority to go up to eighteen, but we don't necessarily need to sell eighteen. Or if we do sell eighteen, we could put money in reserves. So there are future decisions that may be made that could affect the number that we're dealing with.
You're just asking for authorization of that amount.
Right, this just gives us authorization up to not to exceed eighteen million dollars.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? Okay.
Stuart, I think.
Oh, Stuart, uh-huh.
Could I just clarify that the motion is specific to the resolution on the dais?
Yes.
Yeah.
And our next, our next action, as I understand, is we will see a presentation from our architect and the two affected departments on the twenty-fifth. It'll be reflective of the input from the community and revision of budgets with some potential consideration of other issues.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next would be accepting the engineer's report and financial investigation report for Crocker Lane and Valley View Drive, Local Improvement District, and setting a public hearing. Okay, all right, Gordon.
The last time I talked to you was December eighth at a city council work session. At that work session, originally this was going to be three different projects, Bloom Lane, Valley View Drive, and Crocker Lane. And at that work session, we eliminated Bloom Lane. I'd like to pass out two letters that we've received since the staff report was put together for this meeting. I believe you possibly received copies of these letters either by email or some other I wanted to point out that one of the letters is from the Jurorskis. They are on the corner of Bloom Lane and Crocker Lane. And just wanted to point out that they're actually not proposed to be assessed for the LID. They're not in, within the LID boundary, but they nevertheless have some concerns. And then the other letter was from Rose Doherty and she had, I guess the basic gist of her letter was that many of the people on the east side of Crocker Lane weren't going to be assessed for the Crocker Lane LID. And she thought that was unfair. Initially, we talked about doing separate LIDs for each of the projects. When we started putting the financial investigation together, it started to not make sense to do it that way because we're trying to find out what the impacts were going to be on various properties and many of the properties were going to be in two LIDs and it didn't make sense to have separate financial investigations. So we, we've combined them into one LID with one LID boundary, doing one financial investigation so that the impact on each property is a- one LID boundary, doing one financial investigation so that the impact on each property is, is shown and maximized. I'd like to point out in your packet on page, excuse me, near the end of the report, the last two pages are, our last three pages are the financial investigation. And you'll notice in the total market value, there's a whole bunch of lots in that column that are listed as having a total market value of $40,000. Those are last year's tax assessor numbers. Those lots were vacant, there were no houses on them, and currently, all the houses, all the lots have been built upon, so those values are not current. So you look over the far right-hand column of, the second column from the far right-hand side, and you'll see that we're proposing to assess them for 22% of their value, and that's not accurate. It's more in the range of the other houses you see there with the 4% or.
What page are you on?
On page 45.
Oh, okay.
So I guess what I wanted to do was point out that we're actually not trying to get a assessment that's worth 22% of a property's value out of them for the road improvements. They, they no longer are worth nearly $40,000, they're worth somewhere in the neighborhood of 175 to 250,000 dollars because they've all had houses built with them in the last Most of this report is basically what I presented to you in December. Other than combining the two LIDs into one LID, I, we did add the two properties on Valley View Drive that you asked to connect the project up to, I believe that's Hillcrest Street with a connection on, on Valley View Drive. I would imagine you probably just have a lot of questions, so maybe I'll just leave it at that and let you just start asking the questions.
Any questions?
Rerunning, rerunning those numbers with now down to the 4% on that chart, does that change the overall value of anything, or is it just showing it on paper?
Oh, you're talking about those houses?
Page 45, 46, yeah, did you say? They had 40,000 and 22%, now it's gonna go down to about 4%.
Right, yeah, that doesn't change the, the numbers of the project costs or anything like that. All it does is change the, yeah, that 60% is gonna, that's an average, that's, yeah, going to change definitely. It's gonna go a lot lower than that now because now those houses aren't being assessed for 26% of their value, they're being assessed for 4% or 5% of their value.
What that means is they're more secure. The assessments are more secure.
Right, because we're not.
It's not spreading payments out across.
We're not assessing bare, we're not assessing bare land anymore, we're assessing bare land with, or land with improvements.
Okay.
Other questions, Gordon?
I just wondered, I'm sorry, are we assessing anyone on Bloom Lane?
There are.
I saw some in here, and I thought we decided that.
They, those properties, there are three properties on Bloom Lane, on the north side of Bloom Lane, and those properties, maybe 10 years ago, were one single property that fronted Crocker Lane and Bloom Lane. And in order to get their partition approved, they signed a petition waiver to improve both Bloom Lane and Crocker Lane. So they are included in the Crocker Lane LID because that's what they agreed to do when they got their partition approved. So those three are, were at 1.1 property.
But so that, but the original house was facing Crocker.
Right.
And so then they added two lots that were on Bloom.
Right.
So was it meant to just have Crock, the one that faces Crocker be part of the assessment?
No, it was for the, the parent parcel, which was all three of the now current parcels. They, they all are on the hook for it.
Okay.
Do they know that?
That doesn't.
If I could maybe explain too. There's discussion, and maybe Gordon could address this, about the fairness of assessing just the immediately benefited property owners in this area, and then there's been some concern that said, well, gee, the people that live in the subdivisions didn't have to pay anything. Of course, those people did pay indirectly or directly, SDC charges, and in some cases they had to pay assessments as well. And so it's not quite right to say that, you know, they had no hand in this, but Gordon, maybe you'd wanna.
Sure. Like Rose Doherty's letter said, that all the people on the east side did was build 75 feet of sidewalk, well, that's really not true. The St. James Estates built 490 feet of curb and gutter, and eventually, when all the houses are built there, they will finish out the sidewalk for that 490 feet. And the Tuscany Estates subdivision improved 135 feet at the frontage on that side. And then the Crocker Heights subdivision paid for 180 feet of frontage improvements through that fee. So they have done, made some improvements there along the east side of Bloom Lane.
May I raise a procedural question that I'm hoping that Mark and Gordon can help me with because maybe I'm off base here? But this is a quasi judicial process when you hold the public hearing. And I think the decision you should be considering tonight is receiving the engineer's report and deciding whether or not you want to go forward with the project and hold a public hearing.
Right.
At the public hearing, citizens are gonna come before you, and they're gonna tell you why they think the assessment methodology is right or wrong. If you start tonight evaluating individual property situations, the property owner will not be here to hear what your considerations were about their particular property. And so respectfully, I'm uncomfortable, this is really the, the decision you make after you've heard from the public. If you do your deliberation before you hear from the public with the public not hearing the deliberation, I'm fearful that we are creating a procedural mistake and it might deprive somebody of a chance to understand why you're making the decisions that you ultimately make. I hope that, I, that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, that's exactly what the action requested is. It's not for a decision on whether we have an LID, it's a question of whether we accept the engineer's report, is it financially viable, and should we proceed to the public hearing?
And that schedule is listed on page 37 of our packet.
But maybe there are other elements.
Well, I, I guess the question is if, if there are issues with the way the LID is laid out.
Right.
The council has right now, then we probably don't want to take that proposal to the public hearing. So it is a, a bit of a challenge if, if you've got some issues here, we, we need to know that before we take it to the public hearing. But barring anything specific, if you're willing to say, yeah, this is in general a, a good idea, and you're, you're willing to, to hear the input at the public hearing, then, then you move forward.
I completely agree with Mark. Issues, for example, about, do you want to change the scope of the project? Do you want to do it differently? Do you want a broader bound? Well, the, the public is gonna have input on the boundary as well, but if generally, you, if your proposal should be different, then, you know, what we're really doing, the action tonight, is to notify the public of the proposal. So all I'm suggesting is that you not focus on individual property situations as much as the general concept of is this the proposal for which you want to invite the citizens to comment?
And I think one, one other item, and, and I apologize for not thinking about it until just now, but there's discussion here about should the city participate and at what level? And if council has a, a notion of what you're willing to put on the table, it'd be nice to know that tonight so that what goes out to the public is what you're comfortable with, rather than what we have here is four options, no participation, and then three other options for limited participation.
Counsel, are you wanting to direct staff on that or, or wait for public comment?
I would prefer the issue of city participation under all four options to be open for discussion at the public hearing.
So I guess, Jim, I can ask you, will it go to the public hearings and whatever, then we still have the opportunity to use the, the example of Bloom Lane, where the ones on Crocker, the other two are on Bloom, where we told them basically, no, we're not gonna do it. And so we'll be able to delete those if, if we want to later?
Yes, you may, if you make a radical change in the project, that it will significantly reallocate the costs, you may want to redo the hearing when you have modified the proposal. But again, I think the best way to think of it is, this is the city's proposal to the property owners. Just as you did with Bloom Lane, you made a probably politically very wise judgment not to kick up a hornet's nest that you didn't really feel you wanted to, to do. And similarly, if, if you knew that there was something you wanted to take off the table or a substantial modification, by all means, no point in provoking folks if you don't need to. But you do have the right, again, to review the process. What will happen is you'll have a public hearing after you close the, and the, the citizens will have a chance to comment on the scope of the project, the assessment methodology, pretty much anything they want to say. You will then close the public hearing and you will debate, and the decision at that point will be whether or not to go forward with the project as it is envisioned or to modify it in response to whatever you consider or public testimony. Again, my suggestion will be if you make a very substantial modification, you might want to re-advertise so that citizens who were not offended by the first proposal but who might be offended by the second have a chance to tell you so. Then the work gets done, the bills get paid, and then you have another hearing for all these citizens where you have a chance to again adjust the allocations of the assessments. At that point, your options are a little bit limited though because you've already spent the money and it starts to become a zero-sum game. If you give citizen A a break on his rate, then either the city out of your coffers or citizen B is gonna have to pay the difference. So I hope I have explained the process.
No, and, and that's good. I just, just a editorial comment is that our LIDs that we, we do sometimes are unfair to different people. You know, it's just like Oak Street. We didn't have the Oak Street pay anything, you know, the people on that street, and yet here we're, you know, and the people are saying that, they're noticing that, you know, well, some people have to pay, some people don't. Some, sometimes I think, well, either we do it one way or the other way, but we just kind of pick and choose, and that's, I think that causes hard feelings sometimes.
Well, I'm not sure I would agree with that, counselor, because like Oak Street, some of the people didn't pay, we received county transfer money, and we chose as a council on how to use that county road transfer money. And then we subsequently came back and used some fractional value of that to pay on their behalf. This, in my opinion, is, you know, we do so few LIDs, this is not an unusual process for what we've done in the past. It's what are the improvements, what are the estimated costs, and who benefits from them, and what were the conditions of approval through the land use process? And the city has chosen to set up a process, Councilor Reader was here, he would not like, and that is the petition and waivers. And that is a, a major financial discussion at the time that you're doing development. Do you build half-street improvements? Do you build streets in piecemeal? Or do you allow them to be deferred until some point in the future where it makes sense to do a bigger project? So I see this as nothing unusual from what we've done in the past. It's consistent with our past practices, whether those are good or bad.
That's what I'm, yeah, exactly.
And the people have an opportunity to weigh in. I haven't have a email conversation with a gentleman who did not know that there was a petition and waiver on his house. It wasn't, it was disclosed in his title report. He didn't see it. You know, same story we heard out on, on 53rd Street, you know, and so I don't know how we fix those, but we certainly listen to the issues. But I for one think we ought to move forward, accept the engineer's report saying this is an approach, and listen to the public, and then make our decisions.
Yeah, I agree, and I think the public will let us know.
You want that in the motion?
I would, I would move that we adopt the recommended or the requested action.
The resolution, I believe, is that the one on page?
38.
38?
Yes.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, all right.
I'll say, LIDs have never been popular, when people find out about them.
Well, you know, are we through voting?
Um, no, we haven't voted, but we got, it's on the table, yeah.
Yeah, so we ask ourselves, what are the alternatives? You have development with no improvements, or you have development with no improvements with no future options? If so, what we're doing is 20 years down the road, we're committing the city as a whole to have to pay for improvements that benefit specific properties, and everybody else has to pay for them. You know, so do we ask the people to pay based upon the benefit they receive at some time and some, some point in time? Or do we, do we just say in the future, all road improvements will be bond issues, those are subject to general elections and you have to put them out? You know, we were successful in 97 and got a bond issue passed, we were defeated in '02 or '03 for the next bond issue.
I think Floyd makes a really important point. You know, Jim earlier said, you know, you're meant to make a decision here about whether individual property owners pay or you dip into your coffers. And I think there's a perception out there that somehow the city has money that we tried to jealously guard for our own purposes. The money that the city has custody of is the public's money, it's everybody's money, and it's just a difference of how concentrated it is. And so we're not, you know, we, I don't think we on city staff see it as our job to try and, you know, preserve that money for some special use that we have in mind. The notion is, is how do you get the most value, and how do you do it most equitably for the public as a whole? And that's the issue before you here. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, if there's a motion on the table, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. So, all right, and let's see, next is adoption of the consent calendar, and if there isn't any items to be pulled off for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of consent calendar?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next is on page 83, and this would be ODOT agreement for maintenance at crosswalk across Ellsworth Eddie.
So you may recall that we've had a discussion about this crosswalk. Originally, ODOT had come to us, said that crosswalk needed to be removed, staff contacted ODOT. There were issues discovered about the speed postings on Ellsworth and Lion Street. That issue has been resolved. ODOT did do a, a speed study, and they did agree with the city. They're waiting to do the posting until this issue with the crosswalk is worked out. Staff believes that the crosswalk, while it's not at a signalized intersection, provides enough benefit for the city and is used, that it, it's worth the city taking over the maintenance of that crosswalk. ODOT has a policy that crosswalks that aren't at sig, they're signalized intersections on their system are to be maintained by the city. Our cost to maintain that will be fairly marginal going out and refreshing the striping annually is really what it would take. Any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, Bill?
Looks like the state's gonna change the signs.
I believe so, yep.
They, they wanna make it 25 instead of 20?
It's, I believe it's 25. They, they had told us it had to be 20. We pushed back, they did the speed study, and they have agreed that the, that the speed should be 25, if I'm remembering which way we're going with the speeds, yeah.
I don't think speeding on the side is too much good, but sometimes it's hard to cross those streets.
Oh, it is, uh-huh.
I mean, it did help when they did the pedestrian improvements there, and, and I think the, what the issue was, was people were seeing the light on 9th Street, seeing it green, so I think they just totally disregarded 8th Street of pedestrians crossing because, and I witnessed it myself, you know, you'd want pedestrian trying to cross, and, and many, several people had said the same thing. People had said they don't need to stop because the light a block away is, is green.
People had said, they don't need to stop because the light a block away is green. You know, they, they would not acknowledge that, you know, it's a crosswalk, and you have to stop for pedestrians. And most of them, then, they were looking at that light and totally just, you know, you've got three lanes right there, and you just don't, you know, it's hard to focus on-
You have to wait for an opening to get across.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. It is a dangerous, you know, crossing, so, but it has helped when they did more signage, did really help, so, yeah.
Definitely, if you just, just get the people going to church there to wear soft-soled shoes, so they don't mess up the paint and keep our expenses down.
Yeah.
Run fast.
I don't know. There are a lot of folks that frequent some of the activities of soup kitchen, so, yeah.
Soup kitchen.
So, okay, so, counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
The agreement's on page eighty-three.
So make a motion for the city to enter into the intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon for crosswalk maintenance at Eighth and Ellsworth.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Next is the two thousand thirteen fourteen audit report. And Counsel Kupczynski, you were going to report to-
Yes, we had, we had the annual, annual meeting. Everything went very well. We've already had some preliminary information about the successes of that from the previous year. It was also refreshing to hear that because of some of the staff changes, that we now have the new senior accountant. And because of the changes, a new procedure has been implemented that allows the city to have a better handle on the actual processes, to get it on codified, I guess would be the right way to put it, in the computer and on paper, and exactly what happens. Previous senior accountant was absolutely phenomenal, which is why he moved on to bigger and better things. But an awful lot of the items were, historically, have been done through a massive and a gargantuan and growing Excel spreadsheet. And a lot of the things were also being handled because he knew those were where the things were, okay? Well, now it's all being done on a standardized process. If there is an issue, it makes it easier to bring all the forms and public information into the forefront that's readily available, rather than having to go talk to somebody and say, well, where do we find this? How do we get it out? So that's a new process that's, I think it's done, or almost done.
It's completed, yeah.
It is completed, so, and you're going to see, I guess we'll be able, I guess it's going to be mainly behind the scenes, but it'll be more easily available and more efficient to get it for the consumer at the end, at the end result. So it was a good, good meeting.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you, good report. And Stuart, anything else you need to add?
That was very good.
Okay. All right. So counsel, you'll need to make a motion to accept the auditor's report.
Move accept the audit report.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Now that you've done it, I'd like to put in my annual plug for the audit report as a really critical document that too often becomes something that's just sort of routine. And I, I mean, I know, I think I give this speech every year, but it's been a year. So I'd just like to, first of all, commend the finance department for achieving the standards that we set out to achieve in our strategic plan, which is getting the awards for reporting excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association, for having a clean audit despite having a major change in one of our senior accountant positions, and, and for generally keeping the city's finances in good order, which, from my perspective, is one of the most important things that we do. And I think the finance department does a great job of that.
Well, I'm afraid I'm going to have to admit, like Caesar did, that it's all Greek to me, sometimes.
Yeah.
But some of those, I think some of those improvements helped with the bond rating because of some of those background things that were making things clean and transparent, so, yeah.
Caesar should have learned Greek. I'll have to do that.
Well, you know, the concepts are simple enough. It's, it's when you get into the specifics of every accounting principle applied to every line item, which has its own story, and that things start to get a little complicated. But it, again, it's just a, for me, as a city manager, it's, it's a really positive thing, very, helps my security, and lets me sleep better at night, knowing that, you know, the finances are being well-tended, and, and, you know, we're getting good, good reviews on it.
No, it's a matter of trust on my part, so, thank you.
Okay, all right. Done with that item, business from the council. So Bessie?
Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
I saw the sign going up at Lowe's today.
Oh, yes.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's there.
That's all.
I couldn't read what it was. Oh, yeah. I'm crying.
I know. Didn't know you were writing that.
Are you a duck fan?
No, beavers. Beavers lost tonight.
You had a smile on your face when you said that.
No, no, I didn't know that Floyd already knew.
It's a way game, wasn't it?
It was, UCLA, seventy-five to fifty-eight. I know. So, no, they were playing in UCLA?
Yeah. In all fairness, the other team from the south won.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that one. But the girls are playing tonight, too.
So you're talking way south, Southern California.
The one forty miles south, him, Southern California won.
So sorry, Bill. We got away. It was more important to find out about sports games.
Please, you're swaying on.
Anything else, Ben? And you did see the sign-ups, so thank you. Okay, Dick?
I just think it's kind of ironic that Jay Bursham has tried so hard to get his industry back, kind of on a straight keel. But he gets nailed and is really-
I know. Yeah, mm-hmm. Okay. Is that it? Okay, all right. Rich? Okay, great. Floyd?
Yes, I do. I became aware, I'm sure all of us have been watching the news, and the, what's happening in Portland with the port being shut down, and the threat of losing the cargo business in the future from one of the major shippers. There are two letters that have been sent out to our president and our congressional delegation, to the governor and Representative Andy Olson, and Senator Gesser, asking them to use their office and the tools that they have available to them to assist in getting that contract dispute resolved, so that we can get shipping going back on the west coast ports. And I would like us either to sign on to the two letters that have, or one or two of the letters that have been drafted, or draft our own. Because I think that the impact, and what we're seeing, is to our local economy, and we will see it even more in the future. A lot of the stuff that goes out of the Portland Harbor is agricultural-related, and while certainly it's not from within the city limits, it's within our region. And it will have an impact upon our cost and the viability of our businesses, both major manufacturing and even small businesses. So I don't want to get in, we should not be taking a position on the merits of the dispute. We should be taking a position on resolution of the dispute, so that we can get the Oregon economy back on track. And I would ask council's authorization to have the city manager review the two and take appropriate action, either to sign on or to draft an appropriate letter.
Ask who did the rough draft?
It's not a rough draft. It's, there's one letter here that's signed on to by, I don't know, probably a hundred of what I have, and this is probably a recall, but for, from Oregon. It's signed by people from Idaho, Washington, Oregon, California, but just here in Oregon, it's Department of Agriculture, Export Straw Association, Oregon Farm Bureau, Potato Commission, Seed Association, Women in Agriculture, Organic Trade Association, Outdoor Industrial, Industry Association, Pacific Coast Council for Custom Brokers and Freight Forwarders, and Pacific Northwest Vegetable Association, so-
Cities or counties?
I've not seen any cities or counties. I think this is a continuation of showing our support for the businesses that drive the economy in our region. And I think it has a significant impact in the agricultural realm. Now, apparently, the port of Tacoma is still functioning to some degree.
Kind of.
And my understanding is, for a local contractor to take their product from all the way to Tacoma, as opposed to going to Portland, sometimes exceeds nine hundred dollars a trip, additional cost round trip, and the delay in time and processing to get it there. You know, if we just think about what the potential consequences are, if the shutdowns spread to the entire west coast, what that does to the economy of the entire nation, not just our region. So it is somewhat symbolic in nature, because we're not going to convince anybody on our own to do anything, but it certainly is telling our local businesses and our agricultural community that we are concerned that they have a viable place to ship their products.
And who did they address that letter to, that petition letter?
First one is to the president, asking him to even consider using his authority under Taft-Hartley Act. The other, there's another letter is Wyden-Mercley, and it had both, Elmer Schrader, Walden Defazio, had all of our congressional delegation. And it was shown as listing to, carbon copy to our governor and to the representatives, and I think we ought to send them one directly. So I would ask council's authorization to have the city manager review these two, and then take appropriate action to indicate our support, to bring whatever tools necessary to help resolve the labor dispute.
I would second that thought.
So you're, you said ask, make that in a motion?
I'm sorry, I thought I did.
Yeah, no, you didn't say motion, but, yeah.
I would ask the council to do that.
I did second it in a motion.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one thing, just, so we're basically just backing our businesses and things, we're not getting into any of the negotiations.
We're not getting into the merits of the dispute, and who's right, who's wrong. We're just saying, there's an impact to that dispute, and we want to see that port back open, and we want to see that available to receive and ship product.
Well, Hengen, Hengen just announced they're pulling out of Portland. And they are the biggest that Portland had. And, you know, it's, having shipped stuff through Portland and through Tacoma and so forth, I mean, getting stuff in and out of ports can kill you. I mean, if you're, well, especially with, with fresh produce, with it, or, or produce that is, things like nuts and that kind of stuff, that, yeah, you don't have to worry about it right now, but in a month, it'll be dead. You know, you get it sit there, and it's sitting there on some, you know, dock someplace, dying. It's just millions and millions and millions of dollars that are just being thrown away.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'm usually pretty supportive of labor, but I think, I think you're right that this needs to be settled.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the merits of the dispute. I just want the dispute over.
That's a loser.
Yeah, they need to sit down and work it out. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. And is that it, Floyd?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Wes, anything? Okay, staff have anything? Is that Mark?
Well, I just want Mr. Ryan, who, who brought to you his contract concerns. That project is the Vine Street canal repair, bank repairs. You'll recall that the original contract did come to you for approval. Then I brought back to you a request to increase in excess of ten percent, which you approved. I brought back to you a summary of the total costs of the changes. As we're closing out the project, there are costs that the contractor is asking for payment for, in which we are working through those issues and don't necessarily agree with all those costs. So we are working with that, that contractor. It's not a matter of not wanting to pay or not having the money to pay. So I'll contact him tomorrow, and, and we'll continue to work with him, but staff is working through that process.
Okay, Floyd?
Mark, do we still have a process in our payment scheme where a contractor submits a bill, an invoice, and say that we agree with eighty percent of it, but there's twenty percent that we want to talk about, or we need further documentation? Do we provide a partial payment on the undisputed value?
We can do that, yes. And we, we have done that before. I don't know the specific details. I know there are issues we're working through. I don't know those exact issues, but if, if what's outstanding there is, is a limited amount that's under dispute, we certainly can pay that portion that's not under dispute.
I would think that would be wise business.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Anything else? So, okay. With that, we will recess to executive session to discuss rural property transactions in accordance with ORS one-nine-two-point-six-six-oh-two-E. And, all right, thank you, folks.